Good evening. Hello. So, I will call the June 20th City Council Meeting to order. And tonight, we have two very special guests. They're smiling right now. You can't see that, but you will in a minute. We have Houston Jones and Connor Holly. And there are pledge leaders this evening. And Houston is the son of Lisa Jones, who is the Training Coordinator for the city. And Connor is the son of James Holly. And James is a firefighter with the Stillwater Fire Department. So, we're very excited to have Connor and Houston with us. And if you would both step forward to the mic like we practiced. And if everybody would join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, I have some questions for both of you. Who wants to go first? I need to stand up just so I can see ya. Okay, I'm gonna... Uh, Houston, you'll go first, okay? Okay. So, no, you don't want to go first? Well, Connor wants to go first, don't ya? Okay, okay. So Connor, what grade will you be in when you go back to school? Okay. What school do you go to?
Highland Park.
Okay. And do you know who your teacher will be? You probably don't.
Ms. Stokes.
Oh, okay. Very good. And how many brothers and sisters do you have?
One sister.
One sister. Is she in the audience tonight?
Yup.
And what's her name?
Aurora.
Okay, very good. And what do you like to do? Do you have a favorite sport? Is it OSU baseball?
No.
Okay. We didn't practice that. Okay, just say "Go Pokes" for me, okay?
Go Pokes.
Okay, alright, that's good. What's your favorite sport?
Soccer.
Okay, very good. That's a great sport. And you have a joke to tell tonight, right?
Yes.
Okay, so everybody listen to the joke, and then you try to get it. Okay, you ready?
Knock, knock.
Who's there?
The Angry Pirate.
The Angry Pirate who?
The Angry Pirate wants some food.
That was good. That was not the joke you told me, though. What was your other joke?
I don't remember.
Okay, it was, uh... Well, I'll have to give away the punchline. I don't want to do that. Okay, so you did great. Alright, Houston, what grade will you be in?
First grade.
First grade. And where do you go to school?
Westwood.
Westwood. And... Are you ready for school to start?
Yes.
Well, it starts next week. You're ready?
Uh-huh.
He's looking at his mother. No, I'm just teasing you, okay? And do you have a favorite sport?
No.
OSU baseball?
No.
Okay, you know they're playing right now.
Yes.
Yes. So, I need to get this moving. Okay, and did you have a joke?
No.
Okay. And who brought you here tonight? Your mom. And do you have any brothers or sisters?
One brother.
One brother. Okay. Councillors, anybody have any other questions?
I...I love, both of you boy, your hair. It is so nicely styled.
Yes.
Do you use a product?
No!
Do you style your own hair?
What?
Do you style your own hair?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Looks great.
It does look great. Very handsome.
Hey, Houston, did you get a dog recently?
Yes.
What's your dog's name?
Rido.
What is it?
Rido.
Step back a little bit, and then say it.
The Rido.
Okay, alright.
Well, it's fun. I like seeing photos.
Okay, thank you both very much. I have a little bitty gift for you. Okay, so it's a chocolate, and a chocolate, okay? And... There she is. If you'll turn around this way here. One of you on one side of me. You guys did great. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to the... Well, I do have to say one thing. We have a birthday tonight, today. Vice Mayor Pat Darlington's birthday is today. And last week, last Friday, was Councillor Zanotti's birthday. So, everybody wish them...
Tomorrow.
And tomorrow's my birthday, so one, two, three.
And Patty's birthday was yesterday.
Happy Birthday Patty.
And Patty, yes. Okay, so, that takes us to the Consent Docket, Councillors. Does anyone wish to remove an item? Or is there a motion and a second?
Motion to approve Consent Docket?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Docket. Please vote. And the Consent Docket is approved with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to Public Hearings. On Item A, receive public comment regarding a request to close a portion of East Fifth Avenue right-of-way. Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on this item?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McNichol?
And Michael has made his way to the podiums and ready to give his report.
I'm Mike Beatty, Government Review Manager. This closing is for the northeast corner of Fifth Street and Dryden, up there. It's the gray-hatched area here, just in this portion. The yellow-hatched area was vacated last fall, in October. It's a picture of the site as it currently stands, looking toward the east. If I go back, standing right in this area, looking back toward the east. Sonic is here to the north. This is where the Light Village Project is going in right now. Staff findings that this portion of the right-of-way is an unusual, unusable portion of Fifth Street. It's the remnants from the vacation that we did in October. Utilities are all located in the right-of-way. An easement will be reserved at the time of vacation to cover the existing utilities. The closure will not affect any of the current or future traffic patterns in the area. Would have any questions?
Any questions?
Just a comment that I like the real picture, rather than just a line map.
It was hard with some of the growth around there to get something that really showed how it looked, but that was the best one we could pick.
It was, yeah, it was helpful.
Trying to do that on all the rest of the presentations that come up.
At this time, I will open the public hearing, but we don't have anyone to speak, so I will close the public hearing. And I will ask for a recommendation.
Staff recommends approval.
Okay, Councillors, any questions for staff at this time? Or discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. To approve CC-16-79. Please vote. And that is approved with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to General Orders. Mr. McNichol?
First item under General Orders is quarterly update from the Bicycle List and Pedestrian Ad Hoc Advisory Committee. And... Charlotte, no? Sha... Oh, Charlotte. Charlotte and Paula are confusing me, so... But Charlotte will be providing the report.
This is my first prezi presentation, so Paula was very kind to actually set this up for me. So, that is why she was up here. But I wanted to give a quick update relative to the resolution from February 1st, 2016, that established the Bicycle List and Pedestrian Ad Hoc Citizen Advisory Committee to the city administration. And we had our first meeting on March 3rd. First of all, this is kind of Boomer Lake, and relative to the type of facilities that we're looking at and considering. The first meeting was on March 3rd, and 35 people showed up. So, we had a really good turnout. And then we had to collect all the ideas from these 35 people and others that trickled in in the meetings after that. So, from the ideas, we actually broke out into subcommittees to be able to consider all the different ideas that were coming to the table. And I'll talk about what the committee was established for in a minute. But we were looking at getting up to speed on the enumerated transportation-related projects and events that the committee was established for. And I'll review those. One, review and provide recommendations on pedestrian and bicycling needs in accordance with policies, programs, and plans, including the STEP Plan and the Multi-Use Trail and On-Street Bicycle Master Plan. And then, two, assist with preparation of city-sponsored applications for pedestrian and bicycling programs, funding mechanisms, and designations. So, here's a picture of some of our citizen committee members getting up to speed on some of these plans and locations. We split into four subcommittees, so that we could have about five to 10 people per subcommittee, more of a workable group than 35 people trying to work on the same thing. So, we formed the STEP Transportation Plan Subcommittee, the Trails and Routes Subcommittee, a Grants and Funding Subcommittee, and the Bicycle Friendly Community Designation Subcommittee. And here's a picture of Pat Darlington and Keith Reed on a tandem. So, your other city council members are welcome to get on a tandem and give it a try if you want.
You got very wet that day, right?
That was the day you...
Yeah, yeah.
And I just want everyone to stand up, the citizens from our citizen committee that was able to attend. So, we have a few representatives from the committee, as well as the various staff members. And I just wanted to thank them for coming. So, the next thing we were doing, as far as educating ourselves, was tours of Stillwater. So, Tom Duncan is part of our committee, and he was able to get us one of the buses to get around. So, there's Special Event Bus, and we did two tours. One was ADA design for pedestrian facilities, and another one was the Camioca Trail Connections. So, we have various modes of transportation represented even on the tour. Also want to remind that the resolution said that this committee was for persons who utilize non-motorized modes of transportation across city streets, sidewalks, trails, and other public ways. So, here's an example of one mode of transportation. And, again, we are looking at transportation-related projects and events. So, we'll be reviewing across the city, looking at priorities, and then coming to council with recommendations for action. And those recommendations will cost money. So, this is an example of one of the projects that actually Operations Forces is doing around town in the last week. And, last, just wanted to also say that this committee is representing competitive or other serious bicyclist, transportation and recreational bicyclist, bicycle safety professional, including law enforcement, runners or joggers, transportation and recreational walkers, and differently-abled people. So, just like, that's exactly from the resolution. And here's a picture that kind of represents all, a lot of those. I just want to thank you for your time. And there's gonna, there's a B-PAC website that'll be coming on with, especially with the new iteration of the website, probably August. So, we're populating that, and hope that you'll follow along with us. Thank you. Any questions?
Comment?
Comment?
Go ahead.
I do want to thank Charlotte for keeping everybody kind of on task. It was, the interest was overwhelming, almost, at that first meeting. And she's been able to divide us into groups that are very workable and keep us kind of focused. And the tours were absolutely fascinating. You know, if you just drive around the city in your car, you just miss a lot of things. Even if you ride on your bike, you miss a lot of things. But if you just walk around the block, it's just very eye-opening. And I look forward to more hands-on-type evaluations like that. Lot of enthusiasm.
Thank you.
I'd just say thank you. I'm excited that there's a group that large that's interested in looking at all those different avenues and ways that transportation can occur for anyone who wants to get around in the city. So, thank you for that.
Thank you for establishing the committee.
Thank you, and it was a lovely prezi presentation.
Thank you, Paula.
Okay. Mr. McNichol?
Item B.
Item B, Brian Taylor, with Resident Engineer with ODOT, is with us tonight. I pleased to have Brian here. We have a great relationship between OSU and the city and ODOT. And he's going to update us on projects that ODOT is underway in the area.
Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Very happy to share on our progress and give you a status report on projects in the area of most recent. Well, we accepted bids on Sixth and Parkings. The as-read low bidder was Do-It Construction at $7,345,000. There were 13 bidders that bid on that project. There were four that turned in proposals. All four were exceptional contractors. Do-It is a well-respected, very capable contractor, and I look forward to the award of that contract. Some specifics concerning the Sixth and Perkins Project. It is an overcome-all-obstacle contract. We don't do many of those, but this one we did. The overcome-all-obstacle date is September 30th of 2017. So, no matter what obstacles come up, that's the complete-buy date. We also included an incentive/disincentive on that project. The incentive date is August 30th of 2017. We pay $5,000 a day for every day he completes it early, up to a maximum of 20 days. And we fully expect this contractor to be capable of getting at least 15 days of that. Also, as part of this contract, we had lane rentals within a special provision. So, lane rentals, the contractor has to pay to have a lane closed during certain periods of time. The timeframe that we set was 4:00 p.m. before home game days, the day before, up to 4:00 p.m. the day after a home game. The lane rental is $5,000 an hour for every hour of one lane. So, if he had multiple lanes, it would be $10,000 an hour. Obviously, we don't want a contractor out there working during those times of peak travel. The project will be phased in four different phases. The plans show the northwest quadrant of the intersection to start work first. That would be the Boomer Creek. And then, the adjacent westbound 51 East. So, straight across the highway would be, is part of the first phase. We expect the contractor, although he can start the first day of August, I do not believe the contractor will start till approximately October. Probably October 1st, you'll see some work. Most of the work he'll be doing early on is utility work. And he'll also be working in the channel of Boomer Creek. And the second phase would complete the southwest or corner of the quadrant, or the second half of the Boomer Creek Bridge. The third and fourth would be the northbound leg of 177 or Parkings, and then the southbound leg of 177 and Parkings. I would be more than happy to answer any questions you may have on... I can tell you that it's not an easy project, and it's never easy to work in the middle of a highway intersection. There's going to be great inconvenience. And, but, we have the provisions in the contract to do the best we can. And I can assure you with this contractor and the plan we put together, we're taking a very difficult situation and making it as good as possible. Definitely be an inconvenience. I'd encourage you, once construction starts, to avoid the area. I would also like to remind you that we, that this project will serve Stillwater well for a long time, once it's complete. So, we're gonna, for a year of inconvenience, we're gonna have a long-term benefit. And we'll certainly be able to appreciate it, once it's constructed.
Agreed. Inconvenience, but progress.
Correct.
Thank you.
Give you an update. Since the last time we talked, a couple of projects has been added to the eight-year construction work plan. We added the bridge over the Cimarron River, which was not in the eight-year work plan at the Logan-Payne County line. So, now, the entire corridor from Langston all the way to Parkings, the bridge, the parallel bridge in the foreland is now in the eight-year construction work plan. We added a mile stretch, it's a small project, from I-35 along 51. We had a project around Beaver Creek and the railroad to take out the low clearance of the railroad. We're actually going to be going over that railroad, just to the east, I mean, just to the west of Stillwater, or west of 35. That project's going to be about a $30 million project. And in between Interstate 35 and this project, there was a mile stretch without shoulders. So, we included a, we would like that to be continuous. Some other projects around the area that have been awarded recently is... BECO was awarded a contract to do some bridge rehabilitation work on East and West Brush Creek, and also Salt Creek towards Yale. $1.8 million contract. Time on those projects should start, the weather time starts on September 6th. To give you an idea of the investment level in Payne County, as it relates to the eight-year construction work plan. I have an eight-year construction work plan. My budget is approximately $135 million a year. Payne County, in the eight-year construction work plan, makes up $131 million worth of investment. And, which is a very sizable investment. It's especially given the vacuum cleaner sound coming from the south, and, which would be Oklahoma City that can, I've yet to been able to plug up that vacuum cleaner. So, there's a lot of needs down there. But I want to let you know that we do appreciate your support. And we absolutely appreciate your interest. And it's the partnership that we share that helps these programs like this come together. And we certainly value that partnership. And there's a lot of questions you may have. And there's a lot more I could talk about, but I'm also a fan of OSU baseball.
Thank you!
Yes. I would be more than happy to answer any of your questions, or if you ever needed to, just pick up the phone and call. But there is a lot to share, and be more than happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
I don't have any questions, but I never thought I'd be sitting up here in city council and be excited about road construction and bridge work. And it just amazes me. And so, thank you, because I think residents need to realize it's not just one basic street you're working on. I mean, you're working on a whole pattern of transportation mode that will make our city an even safer place to travel. And for a short amount of inconvenience, it really will be worth having it smooth, it makes sense, be safe. And so, thank you for investing in Stillwater as well, and we appreciate your partnership.
Thank you. Very kind words.
I just, I will reiterate what Councillor Zanotti... Thank you. $131 million times.
Of that $131 million, just so you know, that's in my eight-year construction work plan. That does not include any local government projects, such as Hall of Fame and Western and Country Club Road. Those are in addition to the $131 million.
Well...
She can add about another 12 million thank you's, roughly?
Be more than willing to sit down.
And we appreciate at least some of your priority from the city to the south with the vacuum sound. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
All of Payne County appreciates this. City of Stillwater absolutely does.
Appreciate those words. Y'all have a great evening.
Have a great evening.
Go Pokes!
Yes. I didn't have to pry that out of him either. It was beautiful. Okay, you can leave now. Thank you. Okay, so Item C, Mr. McNichol?
Well, John McClain will be providing a report on interim uses for downtown as we look for a permanent future for Block 34 and other areas. He too is aware that there are Cowboy baseball fans here, and have a brief report.
An interjection. The Cowboy baseball game's in a weather delay.
Alright, okay.
Take as much time as you need.
Can increase the length of the presentation.
Scratch that. Keep it right where you had it.
City manager asked for staff to take a look at what we could do with Block 34 on a temporary basis, low-cost, to utilize it while we're deciding what we're going to do with it on a permanent basis. One of the things that we looked at, and what we'd like to employ going forward, is a terminology called tactical urbanism. And the definition of that is small, low-cost, temporary changes at a neighborhood level. And in this case, the neighborhood was downtown. And I would encourage you to Google the term tactical urbanism, and you can learn all about it. I have a few pictures here that I want to show to give you some idea. That is a roll-off dumpster that's been turned into a portable park. This is another example of where they've set up a temporary park in a set of parking spaces along a city street. If you want to slow people down at an intersection that's maybe having a little too much traffic, this is an example of how one neighborhood did it. Another example of temporary parks. This is kind of a before and after, where the, a city took an old, worn-out parking lot and turned it into another temporary park. This was the inspiration for what we did downtown on Friday as our little demonstration project. We kind of leveraged what was already going on, the trucks, food trucks and Toons event, moved the food trucks to Block 34, and turned it into a beach party. This is another example of that. This is downtown Detroit, where they've turned part of the downtown into a beach. And this was our beach party. Little bit smaller than Detroit's, but it was very effective. And I think the children certainly enjoyed it. I know mine did. And this is one that I just really like. This is a theme on tactical urbanism called guerrilla gardening, and someone's planted flowers in all the potholes. So, anyway, what we'd like to do going forward is program a series of events, maybe temporary parks, where we might, we might partner with local landscape companies, come in, set some things up, do a little demonstration. We would, we would leverage some of the events that are already going on downtown. We are in the beginning of planning a bicycle-themed event with the Bicycle Pedestrian Ad Hoc Committee for the near future. Hopefully, that will occur in August, if everything goes well. So, if the council is okay with this, we're gonna, we're gonna plan a series of things to happen on that block that will be temporary.
And if I may add just that quickly, we can also pretty inexpensively install some temporary electric connections and water connections, so that we don't have all of the generator noise at the food truck events. I think that, other than the weather, I think that was a great event. Noise of those generators is kind of annoying. And also, some of the smell, so... Just, again, very, very temporary, very inexpensive addition to make that more usable, make the block more usable.
I thought it was great as well on Friday. Took my family down. My kids loved the beach as well, and the other activities. So, I think it's a great idea for us, given that we don't have a concrete, you know, permanent, long-term plan for that block, to make use of it in the meantime, and to do, you know, interesting events like that, that get people downtown. And we went and ate at a restaurant downtown before we went over, because the food trucks, it's a little hot. is a little hot out at night to, to deal with it. But I think it's a great thing for downtown, and I'd love to see you guys do some really cool stuff with it.
I like the fact that it introduces people to think about coming downtown on a, you know, for purposes and reasons. It's not just, we're gonna introduce something brand-new, and then they have to think about. I mean, it really does introduce them to coming down here on a regular basis. I encourage us to think really how long temporary. You know, I, I'm excited that we're, want to get people there and moving, but I really want to help define what temporary timeframe is, because I think it's important that we make some decisions and move forward. But I think being able to do these wonderful ideas to get people downtown, for different reasons, I think is a great start.
A great point. Counselor Zanotti on defining a timeline. And I also like practicing going downtown, getting that end. The thing that was amazing to me, how many maps and slides have we looked at? And until I was actually standing on the property, I had no idea really how big it was. And there were a lot of activ, different activities going on at, at all different places. So, that was really helpful, even in envisioning something permanent.
And I think, I too, and I think all of us were down there, it was like a gathering spot. I saw so many people, so many friends, and that makes it fun. It was a fun Friday night because of that. So, endless possibilities, and I agree, we need to make a decision in the near future as to what we want to do with that. I think we will be doing that. I don't think we're gonna draw this out too long, but while we're planning it, we get to have all of these fun things.
And I would add too, that, that low cost is one of our, our operating parameters, and that we spent, everything else was already gonna happen. We spent money on sand. We're gonna reuse the sand to de-ice the streets this winter, so it's not gonna go to waste.
Love that.
Does this tactile urbanism also hopefully include some of the merchants that are already there in downtown, to think about ways to, I, it's great that it's a gathering spot for people, but I want to encourage them to explore all of downtown, and then is there some merchant input and other businesses that we can actually find?
We can actually, we can expand this down the streets downtown with some of the temporary parks, maybe. One of the things that we had at the event was a chalkboard, where people could write their ideas about what they wanted to see on that block, and we'll provide that information going forward. There's, there's really no limit to what we can do with this.
Also, we didn't have to block the streets to do this. We were able to pull this off and get many people down there without blocking any streets. So, hopefully, that helped the merchants a little bit, but...
And ultimately, citizen involvement in something like this is one of the main tenets of tactical urbanism. So, if anyone has any ideas about something they'd like to try to do, more than happy to help them out.
You knew a dumpster could be so good. I mean, that's clever, clever idea.
Very good. It was all, it was, it was a lot of fun, so... Any other comments? Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. McClain.
Thanks.
All right, that moves us to resolutions. And Resolution Number CC-2016-19, a resolution authorizing the city manager to change the name of North Wedgewood Street to North Wedgewood Drive. Mr. Dorman.
Title is self-explanatory. This is to make sure that the name on the street matches the mail that comes through the neighborhood, because most of it's addressed to North Wedgewood Drive.
Okay, counselors, any discussion?
No.
Is there a motion?
Yes. To adopt. Approve.
Is it approve? Yeah? That's what it's... Yeah, I know it. I know it. I think I wrote it wrong. It's approve, right?
Approve or adopt.
Yeah, okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 2016-19. Please vote. And Resolution Number 2016-19 is approved with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to Item B, Resolution Number CC-2016-20, a resolution approving action taken by the Stillwater Utilities Authority, or the authority, authorizing a loan from the Oklahoma Water Resources Board in the principal amount of $29,900,000, approving a sales tax agreement between the city and the authority pertaining to certain city sales tax revenues, ratifying and confirming a lease agreement and operation and maintenance contract with the authority, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Dorman.
This is one of two resolutions that you will have tonight, that deal with the finance, the first round of financing for the R-2040 project. Basically, what this does is that it advises the lender that the third-finney sales tax will be, will be placed in the SUA per the ordinance that, the Ordinance 1835. It also makes other stipulations with regard to the, to the lease agreement, which has been in place, to make sure that the lease agreement is of sufficient duration to make, to match the maturation date of the bonds. And other than that, the actual approval of the, of the funding comes with the SUA resolution.
Okay. Questions? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 2016-20. Please vote. And Resolution Number 2016-20 is approved with a vote of five to zero. That moves us to Item C, Resolution CC-2016-21, a resolution of the Stillwater City Council adopting revisions to the Stillwater Design and Construction Standards for Section 1700 Streets and Appartements. Is that how you say that? Okay. Mr. Dorman.
This resolution simply updates certain portions of the standards regarding street construction standards. If you're interested in a rendition of all those changes, I can, I would ask for Ms. Dennison to join us and give you an update on that.
Is there anything in particular that, I mean...
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Paula Dennison with Development Services. What this resolution is doing is not changing the construction requirements, the width, the materials, the depth, or anything like that. We have adopted the Functional Classification Street Map, and that identifies which streets are arterials, collectors, locals, major-miner of those varying street types. That is approved by the Federal Highway Administration and by ODOT. And the classification of those streets in our standards, it says that they are classified based on the latest Stillwater Transportation Enhancement Plan, not the latest Federal Highway Administration adopted map. So, that's the sole change that we're making in this resolution, is clarifying that, because it's a disconnect with what we actually have that has been approved by the council.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Just so I'm clear, I'm sorry. We're basically just changing the labels in the, on the map. We're not changing any of the underlying...
We're not even changing the labels on the map. We're changing which document or entity is the authorizing entity.
But it makes no change to the actual underlying standards?
Not at all. No, sir. Does not.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Dennison. Okay, let's see. We need to vote on that, don't we?
Uh-huh.
Okay, so, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2016-21. Please vote. And 2016-21, resolution is approved with a vote of five to zero. That moves us to ordinances on first reading. Mr. Dorman.
An ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 5200 West Sixth Avenue, from CG Commercial General District to P. Public District.
Counselors, discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Ordinance Number 3344. Please vote. And Ordinance Number 3344 is approved with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to Item B. Mr. Dorman.
Ordinance Number 3345, an ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 6200 West 19th Avenue, from RSL Large Lot Single Family Residential District to P. Public District.
Discussion. Questions? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Ordinance Number 3345. Please vote. Ordinance Number 3345 is approved with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman.
Anything to report, ma'am?
Mr. McNichol.
We're excited to tell, to announce that the Southern Woods Splash Park pad is scheduled to open for play next Thursday, June 30th, at 10:00 a.m. The splash pad is one of two donated to the city by Stillwater Medical Center, Stillwater Community Foundation, this is Stillwater McSonic Lodge. We found out the hard way that ordering parts for those things is not a good time of year to do it, right now, when it's so hot, and that's what's delayed, been one of the delays of the projects, is they're waiting on parts. But the new splash pad's at 12 and Ramsey, and will be open from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. every day.
Can't wait. Other news. Counselor Nahara.
Yes. Sorry. If you, if you haven't made plans already to attend, mark your calendars for the Chickasaw Boomer Blast Fireworks Show. Show will take place Monday, July 4th, at Boomer Lake. Parking is free, and lots will open at 6:30 p.m. And the 19th Annual Family Fishing Tournament will be held earlier that morning, from 6 to 11 a.m. Registration will begin at 5:30 a.m. at Boomer Lake's South Boat Ramp, and Mayor Noble will be there at 5 o'clock handing out coffee. I added that. It's not on there.
He did add that.[1307.65][1307.65](Laughter).
That was not on the script. She might do it.[1311.21][1311.21](Laughter).
I would, if I were asked. Counselor Zanotti.
I hope I'm saying, is it the Missoula Children's Theater? The Missoula Children's Theater production of Peter and Wendy will be presented Saturday, June 25th, with two performances at 3:00 and 5:30 p.m. The performances will be held at the City of Stillwater Community Center Houston Theater. Tickets are available online at tickets.stillwater.org, or call 405-533-8433. Or if you're like me, tickets are $7 each, and will be available at the door, as long as they last.
Okay. Counselor Joyce.
This Thursday, June 23rd, 7:00 to 9:30 p.m. in this room, is the League of Women Voters' Local Candidate Forum for the State Senate Seats and State Representative Seats that are up for election next Tuesday. The 28th is Election Day in Stillwater. If you didn't know that, it's the primaries. But the League of Women Voters will have a forum here on Thursday night. You can submit questions in person while you're here, or through social media and by phone. I assume it's on the T, it's on the local TV channels as well, so you can watch on TV and, and send in your questions as well. So, they do great forums. It would be fantastic if everyone out there could participate and learn about the candidates.
And then go vote.
And then go vote.
Mm-hmm. And Vice Mayor Darlington.
Yes, I actually have a regular announcement, and this follows up on the BPAC report that Sharla gave this, this evening, thanking the citizens who are involved in that committee. And I would encourage anyone, it's, you know, it's called Bike Pedestrian Accessibility Ad Hoc Committee. It's really for anyone who has to move their body anyplace in the city, by any means. And it's, it's a wonderful group of people with a variety of backgrounds and interests, and very open to thinking outside the box, inside the box, all the way around the box. So, we meet once a month, and if you would like to, to drop by, join in, contact Sharla Lovren by email. And this is, you know, it's easy to contact anyone at the city, because it's their first name and their last, first name initial, and their last name, slovern@stillwater.org. My other report is about the Ad Hoc Martin Luther King Committee. We formed that in, oh, last December, I think. And they, their initial interest was in the Martin Luther King activities in January. And they really expanded that from the typical traditional march and presentation at Mount Zion. And they had a showing of Selma in the library, held on the Saturday, Sunday afternoon. It was standing room only, 140-plus people. Panel discussion followed that. Monday's program began with a prayer breakfast for local ministers, and later, the traditional march from the library to Mount Zion took place at 6:00. Part of the 7 o'clock program was an exciting poster contest organized for the public schools by the pastor of the Presbyterian Church, Leah Rachavec. We had 73 essays and 21 posters submitted by students from K. through 12. And those awards were given, awards for those were given at the 7 o'clock meeting. That also was jam-packed. That I've, they have never seen that many people in that church. The committee consists of over 20 regular volunteers. Anyone who wishes to join may join. It's called Stillwater Community United now, instead of the Martin Luther King Ad Hoc Committee. And their mission is to dismantle barriers causing division within our society through education, advocacy, and community. And they hope to expand their activities throughout the year. They're looking forward to doing something for Juneteenth, but that will be postponed until something big next year. And they, one of the interesting things was, a couple of other interesting things, small group studies addressing issues of racism, other projects and programs that they would like to join with other entities in the city to present. So...
We certainly appreciate that committee, and I'm very excited, after seeing last year's, participating for several years, last year's was a culmination of a lot more coordination, and I can't wait to see what the next year brings. So, thanks to the committee, and thank you for that update. That's it. One thing, and this is really aimed at Stillwater, City of Stillwater employees, we encourage employees to volunteer their children as pledge leaders, like we had tonight. This is a new program, and we'd love to meet as many of your children as we can. Please contact Patty in the CMO to make arrangements for your child or children to be a pledge leader. And if they can tell a good joke, even better.[1650.41][1650.41](Laughter). Okay, there, anything else? That moves us to appointments, and under the Item A, Library Trust Board, Sandeep Nabar was appointed to fill an unexpired term in January of this year, 2016. This term expires this month, and Mr. Nabar would like to continue to serve on the Library Trust Board as the city council appointee. So, I make a motion to appoint Sandeep Nabar to the Library Trust Board as the city council appointee. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Nabar to the Library Trust Board as the city council appointee. Please vote. And he is appointed with a vote of five to zero. We appreciate his service so far, and in the years to come. And for Item B, Library Board, Sally Harris's term expired at the end of May, but because she's the chair of the library board, she agreed to serve through the end of June. We have an application from Hugh Crether. If appointed, he will begin serving the library board beginning July 1st, 2016. And I make an, a motion to appoint Mr. Crether to the library board. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Crether to the library board. Please vote. And Mr. Crether is appointed with a vote of five to zero. Welcome to the library board. Is he here tonight? Okay, so, is there a motion to adjourn the city?
Before, before we adjourn, I had the opportunity to serve with Sally Harris on the library board, so she's been on for quite a long time. Would like to thank her for her service to the, to the library board.
Absolutely.
And all of our volunteers who serve on, on boards.
And there's always, all you have to do is go to the city's website to put in an application for anything. There's all kinds of opportunities, so... Okay, now, is there a motion to adjourn the June 20th city council meeting?
A motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn this city council meeting. Please vote. And the city council meeting is adjourned with a vote of five to zero at 6:20 p.m. And the City Council meeting is adjourned with a vote of five to zero at 6:20 p.m. And that moves us to the Stillwater Utilities Authority Regular Meeting and I call the Stillwater Utilities Authority. Is that loud enough? Mr. Joyce?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, Councilor Joyce, he told me I needed to be banging that more often. Trustees, does anyone wish to remove an item or would someone offer a motion and a second to approve a consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Stillwater Utilities Authority Consent Docket. Please vote. And the consent docket is approved with a vote of five to zero. Resolutions. Resolution number SUA 2016-6, a resolution authorizing a loan from the Oklahoma Water Resources Board in the principal amount of $29,900,000, authorizing the issuance of a Series 2016 Drinking Water SRF Promissory Note in said principal amount, approving and authorizing the execution of a loan agreement for drinking water SRF loan and a security agreement with the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, approving and authorizing the execution of a sales tax agreement with the City of Stillwater, ratifying and confirming a lease agreement and operation and maintenance contract with the City of Stillwater, approving and authorizing payments and fees and expenses, approving various covenants, and authorizing execution of other documents pertaining to said loan and containing other provisions pertaining thereto. SUA 16-32. Mr. Dorman.
This is the resolution that will actually authorize the issuance of the bonds to, for the first phase of the Water 20 plan. And as it's planned right now, we will execute these documents sometime next week, certainly before June 30th, obviously, to meet our deadline.
Okay, trustees, questions or a discussion? Motion?
I really appreciated the report, the background information that came with this resolution, all the previous actions that have led up to this point. It was really helpful.
Yes.
It's a large number.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you to them.
And thank you to them. Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number SUA 2016-6. Please vote. And resolution number SUA 2016-6 is approved with a vote of five to zero. That leads us, takes us to reports from officers and boards. General counsel?
Anything to report, ma'am?
City manager?
No items.
Trustees?
No.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting. Please vote. And Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting is adjourned at 6:24 with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to the Stillwater Economic Development Authority Agenda. I call this meeting to order. Getting a little, yeah, okay.
Got to wake us up.
Trustees, there a motion to approve the minutes of the May 2nd meeting?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the May 2nd Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting. Please vote. And the minutes are approved with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman?
Request an executive session pursuant to 2501 Subsections 307(c)(10) for the purpose conferring on matters pertaining to economic development, including the transfer of property financing or the creation of a proposal to entice a business to locate within the City of Stillwater because public disclosure of the matter to be discussed would interfere with the development of products and services and would violate confidentiality of the business.
Okay, item B, Mr. McNichol.
No items.
Trustees?
No.
Is there a motion to move to executive session?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move to executive session. Please vote. And Stillwater Economic Development Authority trustees are moving to an executive session with a vote of five to zero.